Oh, yeah.
Friday afternoon, like later in the afternoon. That was nice.
Yeah, it was a nice day.
Yeah, we played Friday night. My sister and I and her husband. My game is horrible.
I haven't hit a ball yet.
We'll start.
I'm anxious to see how this is gonna go. Short vision, long vision. Just to see how that's gonna make the close one. I had it.
They're gonna have to have somebody like watch the ball.
For a little while. Oh, I can see far out of this eye, but I can't tell.
When I hit mine on eighteen and I'm like, where did it go? He goes, he goes, it basically went like this and then because it's in the road, it's probably in the field. I'm like, wow, I've never hit it that far. I mean, obviously it wasn't where I wanted to go, but if it would have went straight, it would have been great. The final hole. There were kind of by the maintenance place.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Coming along.
I mean, I've hit the building before.
I'm still on the front.
I've never hit it over the building onto the road before. Do you have questions? I don't remember. And I can't remember. The county vehicle, is that for work purposes or is that to travel back and forth from home to? I can't. I just don't remember. It's everything. Anything, everything. Yeah, Dave drove.
He's kind of like on call twenty-four seven or something.
I just couldn't remember. I read it. I'm like.
But your contract really hasn't changed from last year, has it? Except for the.
They just changed.
Other than six thousand more a year.
Or to go down. Your way down. Well, okay.
Minus five.
So what, how much should go up? Same as what the.
I told them to cap or told them to put five in the hole. And then I gave it to him and then you guys and told him that. I didn't want to say.
That's normally what's going on.
He told me he was only expecting three, so I think we should be in a bunch of.
Didn't she see us act like?
Flip before it. Last night I did that. Weeks later he died.
I gotta go. I gotta go home first because I got a two-headed nickel.
Just Mackey's boy.
Jason.
Last pickup I bought off him. I wasn't getting the deal done. Yeah, Lynch guys got done. The guy at the end always worked a couple hundred bucks for him. That's for Jason. What the hell do you want to flip on? He had annoyed.
Yeah, I went to school with that.
Yeah, I'll flip out. Tell him I lose. I'm about ready to pull the trigger anyway. Well, I lost.
And then he died.
Burned up.
ATV wrecked an ATV.
And I thought.
There's always a countdown of all those. Courtney went to school with him and she'll probably follow.
He's a great behind me.
Oh, she'll probably follow up with the statements. I can't believe he hit that far before he wrecked one.
No, I'm not in my good future.
I never thought of that.
He was a great behind. Well, actually, he and I were the same age, but he wasn't.
Courtney, his brother. He killed.
Yeah, his older, older, older boy was killed. Yeah, there's only one left, right?
In automobile.
Yep, yep. He was leaving the Lakeview Water Carnival and I think it was those curves on one seventy-five, like you know, you can either go like that and go to like North Carmel or.
Yeah.
Or you can curve in what Auburn. I think it was that curve.
Okay.
Does he have a motorcycle? No, I'm sitting in a pickup.
Yeah, I think it was.
And, and.
Yeah, there was. I know who you're talking about motorcycle.
That was my best friend.
Really? I don't recall.
By accident. With the sun, because she was heading up to the carnival and the sun was in the right spot and a guy on motorcycle. It was Julie Reasonboves.
Yeah, he was, he was driving the pickup and it was, I'm trying to think, bell. It was a bell.
The motorcycle guy.
Yeah.
Cause he ran around my uncle.
He was going south.
Yeah. How long?
Well, two died. They're pretty sure that the guy had a heart attack and kind of crossed the lane. Even though he, of course, he killed the lady because she couldn't pull the car stop. It was dragging drivers. Yeah. With manure thing on the back. Really heavy.
All right, so I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. The cause meeting. Item, we need approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any deletions, corrections, or additions?
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Now, second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Approval of Monday, May second, twenty twenty-two minutes.
I read the minutes. I thought they read well. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. All right, first item on the agenda to approve payables.
Well, secondary roads likes to know how to make up lost time.
We knew that and was coming unfortunately. You didn't take up a lot of line items, but. So you got over to the end. There you go. Now. Yeah, with physics and bond payment and the jail bond payments and the secondary roads. Any one of those would have been a big one alone.
Them all by themselves. That's right.
I'll make a motion to approve the payables. I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Second item is to approve courts.
And Virginia looks like they're just.
Well, it looks like they're all winding the whole hundred and sixty. Well, that and the private easements. Yeah, I want to be installed in the back forty.
Well, I bet there's, there's something going on there. I mean, they've got the acreage breakdowns and everything like that again.
Another one, everyone taking part of that. Two point four acres. I'll make a motion to approve the files. I see no issues with them.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed motion carries. All right, third item is the approved engineer employment agreement.
This agreement is basically as was in the past, except for a change in the wages and I will make a motion that we approve the employment agreement. With Zach Anderson. Another year.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I think we do. We normally do this every year.
Yeah.
If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Why don't we do that when we do other days?
I don't know.
Yeah, the effective date is the same date. I'm just wondering why we don't do it in January or by else. I mean, the effective date is still July one. Just a question.
I just had it written in my calendar to do it in May.
So for budget, I think we do it in January. We don't know where a lot of times where we're at.
It seems like we do them all and then it's separate.
All right, the next item on the agenda is to approve a cigarette permit for the corner station.
I'll make a motion to approve the corner station.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. All right, item number five, jail change order discussion slash approval. Um, I think everybody did get my response I received from the. Is there any more discussion that the board would like to have?
As I remember, is that five thousand from Shivehatters still here?
Yes.
Okay. So they have five that they're wanting to put into that. And the third, 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 that originally we had talked about. Will baiting construction be held to that even though we didn't have another third participant but in it?
That'd be between him and Shiveh.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I think we're holding our part of the end of the year.
Yes.
Okay.
At least that's my assumption. I think we had that discussion last night.
Okay.
I still feel that we're gonna stick with our word. Napoleon third and then the rest is between baiting and Shiveh. And I think we've made the other adjustments on the change orders that I think is legitimate.
Yeah.
And everything else is between them. I put it that way, but.
Yeah.
And then, of course, they're saying they got their sticking that redesign in there, which that's. It's the way it is and I'm not happy.
So additional grafting and approval process for four thousand. That shouldn't even be part of this conversation. Now. And the five thousand dollar rebate, if you want to call that, coming out of a separate account, that seems according to us, we do. When it comes in, you'll have to apply to this.
Well, we have to pay. My understanding is we'll be making a payment to baitings for the change order dollar and we still owe Shiveh for their services too.
And then they, they are gonna write us a check back.
Yeah, that would probably just go under the. We're just going to the general fund because that's where the money is gonna get moved back to. There's gonna be a actually, probably go on a local auction because if there's any money left in that bond account. But UBI will be moving it back.
Into the world auction, so that's probably. Yeah, leaves a bad taste in my mouth. Well, now, yeah. Um, there's settlement to cost them more money down the road. Well, okay, we're all kind of at the point where that's. Our hands are tied. Not a. According to the county attorney. Not a very good taste, but with that, unfortunately, I'll make the motion that we know that it paid the change order. Final. Final change order.
There's been a motion and a second.
I think that shows what kind of how it discusses.
It's not a happy ending. Yeah. That I thoroughly understand.
With much reservations, I will second. There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Luckily, aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. There's two things here that have to be signed.
And to get this off Courtney's desk.
We have another project we're gonna be talking about today. That's gonna be very tense. Yeah, so let's not have them both go at the same time. All right, I'm gonna jump into manure management. Let's quickly get quite a list here today. Offerman Feeders, section twenty-nine, Washington Township, no changes. L N N Pork LLC, section twenty-five, Ewald Township, updated soil samples and P indexes. GSC Agribusiness, Sparta, section thirty-five, Sheraton Township, updated soil samples and P indexes. Quant Farms, section twenty-seven, Pleasant Valley Township, no changes. Delray Feeders, section six, Ewald Township, updated soil samples and P indexes. Sorensen Site, section five, Jasper Township, updated soil samples and P indexes. Twin Hill LLC, two west, section thirty-two, Pleasant Valley Township, crap, changed crop rotation or optimum yields, used manure analysis. Seven four six Woodford Creek Farms, section thirteen, Union Township, changed crop rotation or optimal meals. Seven five four Woodford Creek Farms, section five, Nice Township, no changes. Seven four one Woodford Creek Farms, section thirty-four, Grant Township, no changes. Ninety-one Woodford Creek Farms, section thirty-one, Cedar Township, Green County, changed crop rotation or optimal meals. Five sixty-four Woodford Creek Farms, section thirty-one, Cedar Township, Green County, changed crop rotation or optimal meals. Ninety-two Woodford Creek Farms, section twenty-six, Wheatland Township, changed crop rotation or optimum meals. Five sixty-five Woodford Creek Farms, section one, Glidden Township, changed crop rotation or optimal meals. Five sixty-six Woodford Creek Farms, section twenty-five, Pleasant Valley Township, changed property or optimal meals. And seven forty-four Woodford Creek, Woodford Creek Farms, section six, Union Township, changed crop rotation or optimum meals. Now that I'm purchased, somebody can go in.
Can we go back here on that? Before we sign that change, that does spell up that we will. Does that spell up that we are gonna provide a third on that fire curtain?
I think that will be a payment to baiting construction.
The board of shoes may decide to. So I guess that'd be just be, well, I mean, a separate thing. I mean, the letter says the board. The projected closeout, it says the board may decide to. If it is, the board desire to us so. It has not been specified in them, so I think we need to make that notation in the minutes that we find on the folding. Which would be our third, which would be eighty-three hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Wanted, wanted to say what? The board's gonna uphold their third as a fire curtain discussion, which would be, we'll just say eighty-three.
Eight thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Hold to our word that we provided.
Yeah. Do you want to change it? So essentially we're tying baiting to the other eight. I know, but we're tying Shiveh's eighty-six hundred to baiting. So that makes him sixteen and I don't think that's right either, but.
But it could be, it could be when she's on both sides and so. But we're doing, we're pulling our, what our words, that's what I want.
We want that notice.
Yeah. But will we pay that separately or whatever? And I assume that probably should be probably a separate chair. But when you do, when we get the final change, we probably won't add that maybe three of them, separate item. I don't know if there needs to be a documentation other than what we did in minutes.
Committee report, who wants to start on that?
Do we need a motion on that or just?
That was notation.
Okay. I can go first. Last Tuesday, I attended the CADC, was received presentation from Coon Rapids about their main street, all the improvements they've made and their upcoming grant for building a fixing a building next to a fire and also be also replacing a housing unit in the upper part of it during the remodeling process and they will be doing I believe six facade fronts with that when and most all of it's tough pointing. So where's that from hardware hang? Come back. Yeah, there was a bit. There's a gap in there. That's the building that burnt. The one, the bar next to it can be remodeled back to a bar situation with a residence upstairs.
Yep, actually it's next to Porter Post Office.
Post Office the other side. So and then where the lumberyard is that all that steel is gonna be taken off and they're gonna look at pointing that entire older structure that's underneath there. The enterprise is getting one of them, a new cup pointing and the building next to it. And the old fire hall ambulance hall. One, the very original one, that's going to is across the grocery store. That's getting a tough point in faceless. Get rid of a couple of garage stores there. They're gonna try to bring it back to the original look. It's kind of exciting for them. They're finding a tough pointer is gonna be the trick and they may have to include them all together in order to entice a decent sized company to do it and it could be quite a project. Um, then on Thursday, Stephanie and I went to a Saint John's Church and attended a meeting about Ukrainian refugees. It was a pretty good meeting. I thought there were a lot of good information there. Then uh, later on, then on Friday, I attended the Plains Area Mental Health Coffee. Uh, I was there about fifteen minutes and then I jumped over and went to New Op. And Stephanie and I did an audit on a client and and checked our general service account money with that new office monitoring and I tell you what, I'm pleasantly pleased with what we see. It's very accurate, very detailed. They have a program and they stick to it, but to the letter. So I think they're doing a really good job. That general service does a good move for us. This upcoming week, today I have the paper and the radio. Thursday I have region twelve. Uh, that is it for me this week.
I think we'll next. Last week, basically didn't have anything except for a few phone calls. This week I have a, I've got to sign some documents out in the outfit today and on Friday, there is going to be a state statewide community action agencies need commissions, need not, and you have, so I need to be out there for a while. That's all I have at this time. And then I think I probably need to visit some projects on the with Zach and the earth pieces, secondary road stuff, so. That's my week.
I'm going. I had nothing official last week and this week tomorrow morning I had the executive board meeting at the landfill. I can go next. I, last week I really had no official meetings, but I had several conversations over the public health situation and and several calls on secondary roads with the weather as wet as it was. It was some people calling for gravel again in the spring. Also got a call. The road situation in Maple River and talked to Zach about that and I know Zach, Zach is working on it and so I, I don't know, I think there's something should be coming there. I, I don't, I don't know what we're gonna do with Mount Carmel and Maple River on the road issue if it's gonna call for a special assessment or something if they want their roads resurfaced or more improved on, but I, I think we uh, the people that I'm talking to are getting tired of hearing we're talking about it because that's all you ever do. You just talk about it. You never do anything.
Oh, I heard that same conversation on green seventy-seven.
So, so maybe, maybe we should probably take a look at it a little harder and then see what we come up with, but this week I've got a conservation board meeting tonight. And I think that's it for right now. We'll see how the week goes.
Okay, I can go. Last week I had the newspaper and radio and then with Rich, I went to the general services audit in the Ukrainian refugee program meeting. And then I did have some conversations just like Dean did with the board health and the subcommittee and some of the people on there, just some back and forth emails and phone calls. This week I have Wesco tonight and that is it. We are scheduled to meet with S H at ten fifteen. Do you want me to get ahold of John and see if they can get on earlier?
That'd be great. So not do. Who wants to? Well, yes. You don't have to wait for me. I've talked to Zach already about it. Yeah, so we can go anytime. Did you want to walk part of that? Are you better not right now? Part of that seventy-seven. Well, we're just talking about it. Who wants to go and? So would a drone help on that as far as if you surveyed it now before we use, for quoting purposes later? That's a good point and it might be a good point. Be good practice for the sheriff, for some of those guys to get down and run that drone. I, I. Ran out of that neighborhood before up in Fairview. Right, I know that. They know, they know that they're. Yeah.
It wouldn't hurt. The thing I know, Scott, it'd be tough to, you know, the sizes of trees in there.
Still, as far as bidding, if there were an outside bidder, I mean, they could get him up without walking onto everybody's property, but.
Having all the local trees vendors give an opportunity.
I would say so.
I'd like to keep it local. I mean, if we can, if nobody wants to bid on it, I, I understand that too.
One time we had the other outfit that did the spring.
Was that out of the morning? Was that right tree service?
No, let's go into, let's go into recess until we figure out, is that fine?
Yeah.
Thank you, motion.
I'll make a motion to go into recess until ten fifteen or sooner.
There's been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed?
What's he looking for?
Don't ask me.
It's a good attorney question. Yeah, hey, John, can you hear me now?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, but do you have a time on?
Well, I think we can make it go as quickly as, as we want to, I, I have an agenda that I'd like to. Stick to, I guess, in the interest of time, so we could, we can breeze through that and then, you know, be ready to answer any questions that you might have.
Correct, okay, yes, I know some of the committee areas, some of the board members have a subcommittee for. Another project, so.
Okay.
It's all an idea, but we're gonna. Yeah, we're good, we're gonna come out of recess, so we'll need a motion and.
I'll make a motion, we come out of recess.
I'll second.
There's been a motion in a second, more discussion, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. John did, good morning, John.
Good morning, can you hear me?
So our final item on the agenda is conversation and presentation with S C H for the Carroll County Courthouse H V A C replacement and interior improvement. So John, we'll go ahead and let you kickstart this, did you want us to approve or is the minutes just for our reference?
Minutes would be for your reference, yeah, so we have an agenda. And also I sent you the minutes from the last meeting, which, you know, if you'd like to re- review and approve those, you know, I'd leave that up to you. But what I'd need to let you know is I don't have Tom on just yet, so if you give me about two minutes, I'll give him a quick call here.
Yeah, you're good.
All right.
I scored through, there's a copy somewhere.
Friday, just a little more packet, right?
Okay. I can't find. So can I have about half of them? We? Perfect.
Probably not half, but. We already ate about half. You know, I like eating them, but maybe like once or twice and then I just love the hunt, so we're gonna go out again and if we find.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll take seven.
Actually, I'll work, I'll work, so I'll be up in Rita.
That's. But you're about like on once or twice and then I, I enjoy that.
That's how I am with asparagus.
Well, I was gonna say. I mean, our asparagus this year is like a swab.
Big round.
Yeah, they're just huge, I don't know.
What got into them?
I don't know, last year they were good, but this year, a- and they're just. Right after another.
Follow this mushroom.
Iowa around.
Yeah, and I have never seen so many pictures of clusters.
First year I found one in the long time.
I mean, we're talking fourteen to sixteen inch clusters, they're calling bouquets.
Man, well, I just wonder if this. You know, I don't know why, why the, well, is that lack of moisture that got them going, you know, all, all winter long and, and.
Iowa State had a thing on those about five or six years ago and it was, it kind of blew up some of the things Iowa saw. Cool, wet weather brings them on there.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess that probably makes sense, yeah, the cool weather probably is the biggest thing.
Say, oh, we need some heat units to bring, well, not necessarily, because I have picked them in the snow before, I have, I was when I was a kid.
If you get all that sun, we've had so much moisture, all that foliage is gonna come up, we won't be able to find them, but my brother-in-law should just crawl on the ground. Where do you get root bark?
At my place.
At my house.
Do you have a ton? I, I just want, I want some because I want to make. I find more mushrooms.
Well, I'll even give you a cutting so you can have your own, because we have, I need to split mine up, you want some?
Yeah.
Well, good.
I do too. Love root bark.
My son and his wife having asparagus patches size at this table out there and they eat about as much the size of that computer.
Oh.
Kids won't eat it.
They just give it away then?
They do. Neighbors, the neighbors pick it all off. I was never a big asparagus, but I have, I've got so I eat quite a bit of it now. I like it.
Just the county's all hearing what we like as far as gardening and mushrooms.
Full of olive oil on it, put it on the smoker when I'm cooking something else and can just get the real marks on it good, that's about all you want. Let's do this like that.
You ever had like, they're like a Italian sausage and you slice them up and then you wrap them in bacon and you put like green chilies and sour, or that's sour cream cheese on it? And then you smoke them, they're like a little appetizers.
Well, stay away from Italian sausage.
It doesn't have to be hot.
No, you could do like, you could do just like polar sausage or any type of, yeah, any, any kind of sausage you like. I like a little bit.
Yeah.
I smoked cream cheese the other week.
Definitely, I think we're probably about ready. I think Tom is waiting to be let in, so I don't know if Ben is. Is able to let Tom in.
There's six people on the way. Ben, are you there? He's walking down the hall second. Geez, I was gonna ask Dalton, just keep a tag Dalton said that to us this morning, three fifteen. Maybe his wife's in there. But that's what I was gonna ask.
I don't know how well or how comfortable she's sleeping with us.
So.
Sorry about that, I had to deal with some stuff.
No, you're good.
Why is, I'm just on the hook, I'm five oh five.
Also, if you'd like, I can share my screen as well, if we want to talk through the agenda and any drawing.
Definitely. He's bored. That'd be easier on all of us.
She probably can't sleep, he's awake.
Hey, I can't.
You need to be awake.
It's your fault, you're waking up too.
Get used to it.
That baby's crying.
Yeah.
So here's what I changed, I put a, move the access point here, just kind of beyond the wall, because you gotta have enough brain to make a flex connection to it. I put one here, put one here, three circuits hooking together. I put one here, this, I put one here. The back corner.
Hey, John, you should be able to share your screen now.
Great, thank you.
What do I need to do, just dig a hole?
Dig a hole. Let me know if you got it.
Like a damp area or a shady area or?
Oh, sunshine. Yeah. I can bring some this afternoon, I got eighty-six circuits in there.
Well, I think we're ready with the, I think the agenda should be pulled up on the screen, if you guys can see that. So everybody see that, okay?
Uh, it's not showing up for some reason.
Okay, let me double check here.
Yeah. I didn't want to do that.
Okay, you should be able to see that, I believe, and we should have everybody from Bluestone on as well, is that right? It's like. Awesome, all right, well, thanks for meeting with us this morning, we appreciate it. We got through design development, I believe on the twenty-first of. April, so we've sent you those drawings and I, I don't think any of it should really be. Much of a surprise at all, a lot of it is what we've already discussed in the past, but what we've done is brought it more up to. Speed, I guess, so to speak, in terms of the design intent and, and gave it a little bit more. We filled out a little bit, our, you know, the drawings, a lot of that was for your information, a lot of that was for us to get the design, you know. Moving in the right direction towards construction documents and then another part of that too is so we could get a decent cost estimate. Put together for, for where we're at to date, so. With that said, what I have is an, an agenda, I understand some, some folks have some time constraints, is that, is that ten thirty or is that eleven?
It, it's, it's after you get done.
Okay, all right, fair enough, well, we'll keep, we'll keep pushing through here, so just to go through this agenda, we can go through it and then. Stop where we need to, but I, I think just to kick it off our milestones, so. Like I said, we, we completed design development on the, on the twenty-fourth, or excuse me, yeah, design development on the twenty-first of April. And so what that does is that, that pushes us into the construction document phase, so these are the real nuts and bolts drawings. So we're gonna take what we discussed today and what we had put together for design development and get that ready to go. For, for bidding and right now we have our completion of the construction document phase being June thirtieth. So, couple months from now, a little less than that, we'll be ready to, for the documents to go out to bid, so with that said. That, that's just something we need to start thinking about, we don't need necessarily answers today on this, but I think, you know, if we picked a bid date. We could use that for us to start putting the documents out for bidding now. There, there's different ways of going about doing that, but if there's a plan room that you typically use or anything to that effect. We could put these drawings out, out to bid publicly and with that, question for you, bid phase. I have starting, let's say in July and going for four weeks, that would end sometime in August. And as a placeholder here, I have a question, if the county has anything. That Carroll County normally includes in the bid documents in terms of. Any standard language that you'd like to put in there, things of that nature, if you do. What we can do is, we can discuss that, you know, offline here, but anything you have in there that, that you'd like me to put in the front ends, I guess, so to speak, of the bid documents. We could certainly do that. And then also. After that's complete, it goes out to bid and it's complete and we would start to discuss. The owner contractor agreement, once the bid is received and signed off on. We would work on that owner contractor agreement with you and then I have construction in here. Starting. It looks like somewhere towards the third week of September, no, I'm sorry, September of twenty-two. It looks like, um, somewhere towards the third week of September. No, I'm sorry, September of twenty two. Sorry. So it's like, um, bid through August, getting a contract signed and then construction potentially starting in September twenty two, and then lasting for that year, which we had talked about being three phases. With any luck, it'd be four months per phase. That would be about a year. So with that said, on these milestones, are there any questions at all or comments that you might have?
Hey, John. Go ahead. Or that language in the contract. I wonder if you should visit our county attorney, John Ward. Can you send a sample of that bid language?
Well, yeah, it'd be anything that you would want to attach from the county, any specific information that the county would have. Uh, and and something like that would be anything in terms of, you know, uh, gosh, just, you know, any bidding information. And I think typically what I see is, um, I I'll tell you what, why don't I look into what I might have, but it's just any, we we would put a lot of, uh, just standard language in, um, from AIA contracts and whatnot and forbidding. But I guess my question is if there's anything really specifically that the county might have that you typically include uh, for bidding, uh, I just wanted to open up that question. I'm not saying necessarily that you do, but uh, if you did, uh, we would just want to discuss that before it goes out to bid.
I I really can't think of anything right now.
Okay.
I I was just, you know, if there was, if you had something that you could send us that would jar, you know, you know, that would.
Sample that.
Yeah, yeah, some of it's, uh, yeah, just non-discrimination, things of that nature.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it let me, uh, let me take note of that and, um, yeah, I could certainly send you anything that I might, uh, you know, might have, but I think, you know, as as Gene mentioned, maybe we talk to the county attorney as well, see if they have anything.
Hey, John, uh, this is Tom. I had a quick question on the on the schedule. You show the CDs being done June thirtieth and we're going out to bid in in July, like essentially beginning of July. Is there any time that we need for like a final page turn or a plan review with the owner after the thirtieth?
Yeah, that's a good question, and that's that's not a bad idea. Maybe we include something like that. So, yeah, you're right, Tom. This would be a real rapid fire, but, uh, yeah, if we want to at June thirtieth, do a page turn, um, that first week of July. Um, I kept this milestone kind of loose, but I think that that would be a good idea, just like we're doing today. Going through the docs, making sure, you know, everybody's on the same page. Uh, yeah, I think that would be a good idea, Tom, to go ahead and do a page turn at that end of June.
Actually, beginning of July, because we we want the whole time. We, you know, we'd want to be able to finish it up by the thirtieth and then send it out. And then give the Carroll County a few few days to look at it and then maybe schedule a page turn.
Yep.
The following week, maybe after the fourth. I I don't think you're in any risk of losing anything by delaying, you know, by extending it out another week or two. In fact, it might work in your it might work in your favor the way the bid market works in Iowa.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and touch on that, Tom? If, you know, I think what you've been saying, Tom, is that the bid market might be better as we get through summer and into fall.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, hi- historically, the bid market's the softest, uh, the closer you get to December. I mean, the the closer you get to the last quarter of the year. And so it it just, uh, y- y- your your peak in terms of the number of projects, public projects bidding is typically in 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 the late January, February, March timeframe. Um, and then it then it gradually starts dropping until you reach a a low point. Um, you know, basically, uh, right at the end of third quarter, beginning of fourth quarter. And that's that's just historical data based on the number of projects that are out to bid any given week. Uh, public projects, not including DOT projects. And and you know, how how that looks this year after the last couple of years, it's only anybody's guess, but but if you go back like six or seven years and look at the data, that's how it generally works. And so we what we try to do on publicly bid projects, the the further out we can push it toward the last half of the year, the better off we are. So just just FYI.
So, yeah, that brings up, uh, a decent question if if the county would like to, you know, maybe sort of hold off you know, into August, maybe to put this out for bid or not. But, uh, again, that's something to think about. Now, we don't have to, again, answer it today, but if the county, if there's any reason you'd want to hold off, uh, August, September to maybe put this out to bid, um, you know, you'd have that availability to do that now.
One of the things we could do is I could reach out to some of the local contractors and just kind of ask what their plate looks like, what they're seeing. And that's the other way to do it, too. It's just that, you know, you you get one shot at this. You want to make sure you y- y- you take the the right shot in terms of when the market's the softest for this type of stuff. Not that anything is soft anymore.
I'll follow up to with with these questions, just so everybody on the phone here has a copy of these questions and we can go through them again before we really get to that, uh, June thirtieth date as well.
Well, I think you've talked about that before, that there are better times to take a project to bid. And is there something out there, you know, as far as month by month, is there a graph that you don't want to, you know, like, you know, May through June, you don't want to take anything to bid or?
Give me a second. Give me a second and I'll pull it up for you because I actually do have.
And that being said, if 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 you find out that there's not really much flexibility with the contractors here in our area, can you actually refuse bids? Can you, you know, say, you know what, these aren't good enough? I mean, these are twenty thirty percent over what you estimate. Yeah, so I mean.
So you do have that right. Yeah, you can wave. You can wave bits, um, for sure if they come in way over than what, uh, was it was anticipated. Um, I've also seen a scenario where, yes, the bids did come in over over budget. But you you take the lowest, uh, responsive, responsible contractor. And you select them to work with and then we go into a, um, value into a period like a value, yeah, value management, value engineering, or you know, um, maybe they could tell you to when the timing is right, you know, where the cost might come down a little bit for them. So you you go into more of a, you get the bid and then you go to a negotiation phase with the contractor, you know, that's that's selected uh, after analyzing all the bidding information. So you want to make sure everybody was fair in their bids, what they don't think they missed anything, things of that nature. And then like I said, what I've seen here in Douglas County even quite a bit is is selecting that lowest responsive bidder and working with them to get the project where you need it to be, uh, you know, from a cost basis. Now, backing up here too, I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to get your base bid at a certain cost and then we're doing these add alternates. So we're putting the bare necessities in the bid, I should say. And then we have, I think, three different uh, add alternates right now. And, you know, if we decide moving forward here, that it makes sense to maybe carve out any more of the project to go into the base bid or be an add alternate, we can do that as well. I understand the bidding market is it's just kind of the Wild West right now in terms of, you know, what's happening with inflation and and just a vast array of things. So if we really want to pare the project down just to the the very essentials and then, you know, like I said, carve out pieces and parts of it to do as as project adds, you'll get a bid on the base, you'll get a base bid on the project. So like I said, the the real essentials and then we could think of everything else on the add alternate list as essentials as well. But, you know, with that said, uh, you can have your base bid and then you can have that luxury of of adding pieces and parts onto it later, you know.
Hey, John, can you can you stop sharing your screen for a second and I'll pull this up really quick?
You bet, yeah.
I think I can. There you go.
So let me show you guys, uh, you guys see that? So what you're looking at is, and this is data is only through twenty twenty. I don't don't have the twenty twenty one data built into this yet. But the the bottom, the the X axis is basically January through December. And then the Y axis is the number of book projects bidding in any given week. And if you look at this graph, you can kind of see that that the first quarter is typically the heaviest time for number of projects bidding. What that translates into is more, it it's a target-rich environment for contractors, hence that they're less they're less motivated to be super competitive when they've got a lot of stuff out there. And then as you move through the the third quarter or second quarter, it starts dropping off. You can kind of see that we're uh, i- in a typical year, we're kind of about, uh, half the number of projects bidding that maybe or maybe a two thirds that are bidding maybe in the first quarter. And it kind of keeps steadily dropping until kind of sometime in the in the uh, early fall, late summer, it kind of bottoms out in terms of number of projects. Now, the the interesting thing is this data is only only through, um, twenty twenty, so it's essentially pre-COVID or just the first part of COVID. Um, and and so I don't really know it just based on the bids that we had last year, this seems seems to have held true in terms of bid results. And, um, although we were getting pretty good bid results even during the first quarter, so which is really odd. I mean, and and it was very spotty. We'd get some really good type of results on one project. And in the same week, we'd get another one. It would be blown out of the water. And there was like no rhyme or reason. So I I I kind of show you guys this graph with a little bit of a grain of salt because I I really, I don't think anybody really knows how the market's reacting anymore. So a- as a strategy, what I would suggest is that John and I just kind of spend the next month while we're wrapping up CDs, making calls to local contractors that would be likely bidders on this project and just kind of doing an informal conversation to make sure A, that they're aware of the project and they're reserving some time for it, and B, that, you know, what's their take on the market and how busy are they? So anyhow, so that I guess any questions on this?
Yeah, that's that's good. It looks like the second, like the first of the second week in August, it looks like all of them are dipping. You know, they're except for two thousand nineteen, when when it's kind of going the other way.
Yeah, actually, if you look at it, it it's just kind of, and again, it it's, don't read too much into this. This is just a a piece of data. And 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 the data is only indirectly related to project cost because what this is telling you is how many projects are out bidding publicly minus DOT projects. That's all this graph is telling you. And and you can infer from that that the less projects are out in the market, the better bids you're gonna have on individual projects, which seems to hold true. But, yeah, I again, it it's a it's a piece of data and and it's just some information, just so you're aware of it, just so we can all make good decisions going forward.
Yeah, I agree. It 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 looks like definitely don't go out to bid in the spring. So we've got our bases covered there. Now the question is if we want to try the time in July, August, you know, September looks like it's really where it starts to drop, so.
Yeah, really, anytime after July, it's kind of, you know, the markets, you know, the market's got enough capacity from, you know, it seems like in terms of the the number of projects bidding, but again, there's a lot of projects out in the market right now. I mean, it it's just a very target-rich environment. It's just bizarre. Um, and so I don't know how the economy inflation impacts how contractors are approaching things. Heck, I would have thought that here a year ago with all the commodity prices as high as they were and delays in shipping, that that would have slowed everything down. And it didn't. So we've been busier here in the last year and a half than we have been in a long time. So anyhow.
Well, it looks like you get you're on the right idea that we checked with the local contractors and then maybe push that back into August, September, that bidding.
And if you guys want to share with us contractors that you know in Carroll County or people that do work in in Carroll County, uh, especially in Carroll, just let us know, just so we're covering the right bases. I have a pretty good sense from an MEP standpoint who would be talking to, but, you know.
Well, I would assume that two here that would be would be Grease would be with the HVAC and then also maybe bathing construction on the construction.
Nelson.
And Nelson.
Roderick.
Roderick might be interested. Yeah, Roderick Construction.
Yeah, and I've talked to Nelson about it just because I I know the Nelson guys pretty well. So they like us, so hopefully that'll attract them.
That's a good idea, Tom, though. We'll we'll, uh, we'll discuss it. I I think you've, you know, you know, you've identified a few local general contractors, so I think it's a good idea that we at least start that conversation with them and just kind of see what the, uh, you know, what the bid climate looks like right now and and kind of go from there. So yeah, I think, Tom, I appreciate that. I think we're heading into the right season though for bidding, for sure. It's just, uh, like I said, we we don't know exactly what what twenty twenty two really looks like right now. So we'll we'll find out more about that. Um, in terms of, uh, some past conversations we've had, now, we had talked last time about securing the counters with maybe a rolling counter or glass. Has there been any more thought given in terms of, uh, potential preference for that?
Do you have any preference, Courtney?
I don't like the glass that I've seen.
Yeah, I actually, the one picture you had of the glass I liked also. I would think one thing at least you did, then you don't have to worry about securing it at night when be one less step to do.
To handle by gap about that big below. Very similar to what the GL has over.
Well, he 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 sent out a picture of it some.
Can you pull those out, John, the pictures that you sent?
Um, yeah, let me see if where I might have those.
It was a huge file.
I'm not gonna say everybody has the same opinion as me, but I like the glass.
Well, I went right to it. There we go. So this is, uh, this one in particular is Rollins, uh, Wyoming. So you have kind of a. What's that?
Not sharing with us yet.
Oh. Bye.
I know it's gonna be a pain to keep clean, but.
I think if you went with more of the frosted stuff, that isn't so that I did like that, but I think that was one that was near the.
So it should be sharing now. Is that coming through? Okay, so, yeah, you have a kind of a cover here for computer monitors. You can kind of see those peeking in the background and printers and things of that nature. Then about a four to six inch gap just to pass papers underneath. And, uh, this is an actual uh, electric speaker. Now, this might be something you have to charge every night with batteries and then it's ready to go the next day. But, uh, otherwise, um, so, yeah, glass, you know, um, glass panels, I I think the, I and let me back up. I wholeheartedly agree with that glass option. I think it's we we've had some, um, success using it in the past. And, uh, are you seeing when I change pictures now?
Yeah, yeah. John, is there a option that might have a frost to some of that glass to cut down on people being able to see in- information that you really are not there to deal with?
Right, sure. That is, that's a great question as well. But, yeah, we could, uh, do any sort of combination that you'd like with glass. We could tint it, we could, uh, the the frosting idea, yeah. So you know, with the laminated glass, two pieces put together, you could put a frost in between it so that that doesn't, um, you never really get damaged, you know, if something something were to nick the glass. So there's a wide array of different things we could do. there's a wide array of different things we could do with that.
With close interaction between the employee and the customer, that clear would be good. So they can, everybody can be on the same page, but I don't want them to be able to see.
See, that's got
I get down another desk.
Disability.
Yep.
Seat right there for, for a person who who can't stand. Can't give.
Oh, yeah.
Looked about.
Yeah. And I do like that up.
Yeah, it gives you privacy if you're standing at the counter. Those wood dividers between you and the person.
Looks like a bank.
Yeah.
Looks like a bank. Yeah. So the question that I have, John, is between the glass and the the, the dividers there that are higher than the counter, do they, is there, is there glass that goes all the way to the ceiling there or are they open on top?
Yeah. So there's glass that rests on top of that and goes up to a channel in the ceiling, right? Yeah, there's a pane of glass right there.
It's completely sealed then.
So it is. Yeah. Yeah. And this was a, thinking back to this, this was a direct response to COVID and what was put out at that time uh, for COVID was in terms of how to do this to protect the employees uh, for COVID, uh, staff, you, you put a higher pressure in, in the staff space and, and pressurize that higher. So that no air is being pulled into that space. Now, Tom, I don't know, you know, how that works necessarily mechanically, but that was something that was advised back uh, early on in the COVID days. Um, so that's what was put into effect on this particular project. Uh, and, and this one, I can't recall. I think that uh, I think that uh, a real emphasis was put on security. So some of this might be bullet resistant glass. Uh, there's no such thing as bulletproof, but uh, bullet resistance up to certain calibers. There's certainly options. Gets really costly, but I think uh, for this particular project, we use the bullet resistant glass as well.
How much more spend is that? That bullet may be cheaper just to train them how to use.
It's uh, it gets up there. I think pretty close to like throwing out a number of $30 a square foot or so. Uh, so it, I mean, it's not a budget breaker, um, but uh, it, it's an option and there's different levels to it. So um, if that's something that you'd like to include as well um, into this particular project, we could certainly uh, do that. I think right now we're tracking uh, the costs and, and so far, knock on wood, we're, we're still trending really well in terms of where we act, where we're at cost wise for the project. So uh, here, here's another option. We, we can go back to and talk about that, that glass and, and uh, and strategize on that. If we just want clear tempered or if we want laminated or bullet resistant, there's, there's a whole array of options and that, you know, I could look into cost on that. Um, but yeah, here's the last one we did. And this, this has glass going up to just a channel. It just wasn't installed yet. But uh, this one actually has little under glass, um, paper um, trays. So you could, you could pass underneath the glass and you don't necessarily have to have that gap if you don't want to. So.
No, I think if we just have.
That's what I think too. If my glass under is needed.
Like that one's got a little pass underneath. The glass goes all the way down.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, we don't think we need that, Tom.
Okay. Yeah. So most every one of these that you see has the ADA uh, spot counter. Now, what I would say with this is that it, it works. It's great. Um, it, it's, you know, all the ADA requirements. Um, but you sort of lose a position, so to speak here. So day to day, this is Douglas County. They have three full time, you know, uh, staff sitting at the counter. This fourth position is only used when necessary. So um, that's something else to think about where we might be sort of tight in a, you know, in counter space. Uh, if, if you're, you know, considering this um, lower ADA counter, we could certainly do that. I, I guess what I would point out is you do lose some of that counter space and the way we have it designed right now, you still meet ADA requirements without having the lower uh, positions. So I wanted to throw that out there as well.
Do you allow voting at that? I, I couldn't give you that option.
The thing, John, is if you did put that in or you could always even someone that's not handicapped could sit down and do business.
Right. Right. You, you could. Um, the counter to that, uh, what we've seen in the past is that then the person that goes to that station, the, the counter is really low because it's at about 30 inches high. So um, you know, and that's just another thing to think about.
Better. They just need to be patient and wait their turn.
All right. Absolutely. Yeah. So I'm, I'm open. Uh, it looked like Douglas County opted to have that and uh, I think Rollins, you know, uh, Carbon County opted to have that. So it's not out of the question uh, to do that. I just kind of let you know what's some of the um, some of the drawbacks are to that. So I'm certainly, you know, wide open to putting one of those in.
I don't think it's a bad idea to have them in or that way we're complying with ADA then.
Just saying, all four counters have a dropdown.
Have a little spot each, each counter. Well, we, we probably would do the same thing up in a clerk of courts office too, right?
Because I mean, you know.
Yeah. Well, that's a question. That uh, has been really not in, in the contract to do the clerk of courts counter. Uh, but it doesn't say that we couldn't do that. So any other counters that you want to replace?
Assessment. Yeah, I think, I think that, that counter up at the clerk of courts, we need to look at that. We just will do that at the same time.
Okay.
I, I know they've, they've questioned some stuff about uh, how we're going to handle that screening anyway. So I think if we do it, we just will do it up there and then make an awful handicap for them up there too.
Okay. So perfect. So, so big picture, we're going with the glass and we're going to put in the uh, lower ADA counters. So I'm going to start on that uh, uh, in that direction and, and um, I think, you know, I think these are both good decisions, um, for sure. So uh, you, you know, next, next step, you'll start seeing that included uh, in the project. Um, and we could, we can go back to any of these too. Uh, in the interest of just pressing forward with this, I did have then the, the board meeting room and I, I do have some questions in there, but with that said, I also am going to ask to set up times with you to go through and talk about each of the spaces one more time with everybody. So in my mind, I'm going back through uh, with Lisa and, and Courtney and I had the supervisors' meeting room. If you want to carve out time just to talk about the specific uh, boardroom, we could do that or we could do it now as well. So I'm open either way. Uh, whatever works best for you, but I, I will come back on, on these other two spaces and just do a phone call or a Zoom meeting or whatnot with those department heads to talk about their individual spaces and just make sure we have things right there, especially at those uh, the, the counters are always the big uh, concern, making sure we have those uh, you know, able to function on a daily basis properly. So with that said, I would ask if you want to go through the board meeting room, some of these questions now, we could kind of talk through real quick and then I could also set up the time with you in the future to go back and talk about.
I think if we're all here, we can do it now.
Okay. So in terms of a raised floor, we talked about it. Uh, I didn't put it in, but uh, I would ask that uh, uh, you know, you let me know whether or not that is something you'd like me to uh, add into the plans.
How much raise are you talking?
Typically, I think uh, it goes like six to 12 inches uh, in a space like this. So couple steps up.
The ADA compliant and have the ramp going up to take up a lot.
Yeah, we touched on that. Uh, six inch stair gives you a six foot long ramp. So uh, it makes it tough uh, so to speak on, on getting that to fit into the room. And typically what I've seen, uh, you could certainly do the ramp. Um, I've seen in the past also as well where if it's not immediately required, um, right now you do the stair and then in the future you do a uh, a chair lift. So.
I guess I, I, I'm not a big fan of the raised floor. I think everybody can be at the same level.
And I think.
I was gonna say, you know, I think uh, your, your your courtroom probably has stairs right now too. And I'm not sure if you have a ramp in any of those right now either, uh, or.
Or stools.
Razor chair.
Yeah.
I, I, I think for the size of that room, I think we're defeating the purpose of it. I think we're going to take up too much room worth of. Now, even, even your stairs are going to take up some room. So I, I would say let's just and I, I think Stephanie made the comment about we all face in one direction will be a big improvement. So I don't think that raised floor needs to be there.
Yeah. I'm going to put in.
We're all facing one direction.
That's what we want them to be.
I mean, so we'd all be in a line then.
Yeah.
Or maybe like a little bit horse.
Yeah, kind of an, so that we can look at each other. I think you still, I say, yeah, yeah. Yes, I would, uh, yeah.
Are you able to see the drawings right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, something like that.
So uh, this radius has been tightened up to 10 feet, which is pretty tight. And I think that gives a better line of sight. Um, from each position right now. So uh, with that said, yeah, I think um, you know, if there's any concerns with the, the radius here, we can continue to tighten that up, but I think uh, that 10 feet. Um, I think, you know, I think the way it's set up right now is adequate, but you know, there's also other ways to do this. If you wanted to do it more of a boomerang shape, uh, we can try that as well. I think really what I'm trying to do is not use up as much space, I think is a boomerang, you know, would potentially use as well. So.
Is, how much, what's that work out to work space at the top? Uh, three feet, two and a half feet?
Yeah, um, let me.
Four feet paper or five feet?
I think we added around four feet. So four foot four.
Okay. Does that leave you a little bit of a room for a drawer or a filing drawer? Or a combination of small drawer, big drawer on one side?
Yeah. Yeah. So depending on what you'd like, and these are good questions. Um, you know, we could do a built in drawer for sure, or you know, pencil tray, that sort of thing. And then also I, I know in the past you've mentioned maybe a filing cabinet or, you know, something along one side. Uh, I think we could probably do something, you know, 12 inches wide or something like that, which is not very wide. If we wanted to start getting a little wider than four feet, we could, we could start to push these edges out a little bit and, and potentially do that. Um, I'm trying to think of what a typical filing cabinet would be. Uh, maybe something more like eight.
Those are, those are standard filing cabinets. So those are.
Well, and the thing is, we, I think there's enough of those two drawer filing or three drawers filing cabinets down there. That's, yeah, that came out of the sheriff's office that we could utilize.
Just, just push, you know, push something like that underneath the counter.
Filing in the room is fine. I don't hope that necessarily ones to be under the table. You can always get up and go.
I've got mine here, but I'm probably reusing those out, throwing them all away, you know, that have been here.
We're doing things electronic now.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but you could stick something in it.
I do like having that.
That drawer this size probably would work, but if you put one of these and then one right below it and then like a little small file holder, that should hold about everything you need.
Well, it'd be nice to be able to pull up and down. You know, and hoping to have that.
I think there needs to be one drawer for sure. And then maybe throw it up. Try to line something up.
It'd be nice. Just throw it up on the screen and you can see it. I can see it.
Well, like you said, you could put those uh, uh, file hangers on this one side too, that would make it. So you wouldn't take up all that leg room too.
Now that, that's the problem, you know, like four and a half feet, you get something that's just a little smaller than that. You're getting kind of.
Yeah, it could get kind of tight. Uh, I, I agree absolutely. So uh, you know, I think in order to buy another foot back, then we start getting into adding five feet, which might not be out of the question, you know, to extend this out a couple more feet each way. Why don't I try to do that? Why don't I try to get these more to five feet each? And then if you'd like, uh, we could do some built in, uh, well, we could do a drawer, like you said, for sure. And if you want any sort of built in file cabinet, um, we could start to put that in as well.
Well, that or even just even a, a file cabinet. They said with, there was some down at the sheriff's department that would utilize, it'd be underneath there. You wouldn't see them.
Okay.
Or if it's too narrow, put some of those uh, just file holders on the side, you know, that would hold, you know, several files in it or just the, or hang papers in. I'm saying.
Yeah. Yeah, I got those at home and they just catch stuff.
Yeah. Okay.
You gotta throw them out. You gotta throw them out.
Like one drawer in your kitchen is full of junk. The only, the only other thing I, and I, is wherever Courtney's setting, um, wherever she chooses, it doesn't matter to me, whichever direction she'd like to face, but uh, I'd like her to have access to a small printer, a black and white printer that's either on or underneath the desk uh, with a little paper storage. So we can uh, print out things. If we ask for a copy of a bill, she can print it right out and we can see it right there rather than have to run after it or
I think that's what he's got.
That two seat counter there, that two seat desk.
Yeah.
Right there. Is that what that is? Has that got a printer on it then too?
Well, that's commonly what I see is um, you know, two, three person table there. And, and yeah, they're a little printer. I think we talked about that last time. So so that's the spot right now. However, I would say that this isn't necessarily the layout you need to end up with it. If you want to do it any differently, if you want to add a sixth, you know, seat, um, we could, we could do that. I, I just always see it this way. So uh, without any lack of, you know, without any imagination, uh, this is how I see it nine out of 10 times. So.
So then you have that, that center one would be anybody that'd be addressing the board then.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Attorney and, and the engineer could sit over in the middle three seats if they're there.
Yeah.
Well, commonly I see this uh, printing, if you have that. I mean, to present two or three people, they sit here and then if you have a speaker, they come up to the podium and speak.
I like the way that's laid out.
Yeah. Well, you know, here's, here's a thought that I had and, you know, everybody's going to be on one level. And I guess where the curve is in the in the um, for the supervisors, say from say from where the inside, the inside, so it'd be opposite of, it'd be on this side. So from point to point from the curve on the public side, if you just had a counter along there with chairs.
Are you speaking right here?
Yeah, from there to there. And they could come up and they could actually sit closer to us and be more part of a conversation as, I don't know, the lectern thing, it's kind of like putting somebody I don't know, I would just assume that if I was a public member, I would just assume not sit there, but I don't know.
Well, they, they could still sit there. What, what, what I, what I would say is I've, I've been through lots and lots of public meetings, um, just to talk about, you know, projects that I'm working on architecturally, um, even bidding things, uh, things of that nature. I've been in dozens and dozens of these types of rooms and this is, this is typically the arrangement. Um, and I would say too, when, when I have to go stand at the lectern and, and speak and I have you know, seven eyes on me, all focused right on me. Uh, for me, I, I'm used to speaking publicly, but it could get a little, I, I see your point with the um, with that lectern. Uh, it's how I usually see it. I, I would think that if I even had to come up and sort of stand right in front of everybody, it'd be.
I'm talking about sitting because that's what we have them do now. They come up and they sit at the table with us. They can do it at those three chairs as well.
Yeah, exactly. And so that's how, you know, I've seen it done, but I see one person get up and sort of speak, but doesn't mean that that's how this has to be either. Maybe you'd like to move the table more towards the center and, and have that as an option. Um, you know, uh, but I'm open again as well. This, like I said, this is how you know, nine out of 10 of them are, but uh, the, the lectern, I, you know, if, if it's not how you, you like to conduct business typically, I would just move this table maybe a little bit more to the center. Uh, and then Tom and Jason, I know you guys are on the phone too. You've been looking at this room uh, from an audio visual. Uh, from an audio visual standpoint, maybe you guys want to touch on that too, in terms of how you'd have it set up because. These days, I think what you could do is you'll each have. Probably a microphone, maybe a little iPad, something like that. So you could see. What's being presented. So what I've seen in the past is maybe a camera from up above. Uh, the points down to the table. So you could see what's, you know, if it's a drawing or, you know, whatnot. Uh, everybody. Do that.
I sent you a picture of how the city works with the overhead camera, the, can point down on the lectern. And I think that makes it easy for the speaker. Because they can be pointing to something with their hands and then everybody can be watching it on their screen at the same time.
Yeah, and that, that's, and that's, I've not sat in the city very often and watched presentations, but.
It comes in handy.
My problem would be is I want the audience to be able to see as well as the supervisors be able to see. Exactly what that person at the podium is doing.
But that's pointing to.
On the screens, they, they.
Onto the screens.
Yeah. So when they turn on the overhead camera, like if I'm sitting here and I write. Um, Courtney, whatever, I mean, she can see it sitting there. I mean, it zooms in on whatever they're presenting. So it makes it easier on presenter.
So where would you put the screen in this, this?
Usually ones on each wall.
Yeah, Tom or Jason, uh, I think Jason, you're, you're taking a harder look at this. I think we're, we're open to suggestions right now. And, and I think Tom had mentioned too. About doing this as an allowance as well. So maybe you guys want to touch on that a little bit.
Yeah. So there's multiple ways that we can look at the AV. We've done several of these, uh, uh, board type spaces, but, uh. A lot of times what they'll do is back behind the, uh, board, we'll put a large monitor that, uh, everybody can see from the audience. Yes. And then, um. You'd also have a monit, like, like you said, um, we would put a document camera of some sort. That's facing down so that you can see the, what, what's being presented. Um. We would also tie that to a PC. So if they bring in something that they want to present, uh. Digitally, they can do that as well. That would also provide or show up on the, on the monitor back behind. Um. A lot of times where you, where you've got your, um, audience with the. With the partition there, we would also put some type of a, maybe it's a wall hung monitor that's back there. That, uh, can also be looked at when the audience is larger. So they're not looking clear up to the front of the room. Um, so they can see what's going on, especially if they're presenting text or writing or something that's going to be hard to see. Um, there'd be another monitor back towards, um, the, the, behind that, behind that partition.
Well, I like that idea that monitor on the side. That way we can see it too, if we wanted to.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you want to see a bigger view.
Jason, have you, have you seen like, uh, like the? The, the board members also having like, I, I know we, we recently did a project where they, everybody had an iPad at their individual desk. Um, so that they could follow along on the, on the presentation, on the, on the screen or the iPad or whatever it is in front of them.
Yeah, that's, that's something that we did, uh, I think for the, actually John, the, the Johnson School Board recently redid their. Uh, meeting room. And that was something that we provided there is, uh, each one of them could. Um, it's a wire, it's a wireless iPad. So that even if they got up, they could take that with them, um, to see what's going on if they weren't, if they weren't sitting. Um, and they're not looking over towards the right to the monitor. Um, that would be there as well. But John, I was thinking that there would be, uh, Tom, can you mute? And then, uh, there'd be a monitor probably back, um, behind the partition. It could be, um. No, behind the, the, the division partition. Yeah, back in there, um, somewhere that we would put, uh, wall hung. Or I'm sorry, ceiling hung, that, that they'd be able to see that instead of looking all the way up to the front. And then do you have, um, we would look at typically, we have speakers. That would be back there as well and microphones in case you had, um, some type of a correspondence with the audience there as well.
Yeah. So a, a speaker system that. You know, like you said, I think it could tie into microphones, um. At each station and then also, so you know, you get sound. Uh, to the, uh, out to the audience as well as sound out to the, you know, if it's a online meeting like we're having right now.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We did, just this is for your information and I, I'm not sure that we would send all this stuff out to bid. We have a good IT department. Um, I don't think there's hardly anything I've seen so far that they can't handle.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Matter of work, it's a matter of working with them and getting the, the details done and.
Yeah. So, uh, I think, uh, what I've seen in the past, you know, Jason, let me know, uh, but we get a, we get a list of equipment put together. Um, you know, and. The AV kind of IT world knows what that means. Once we get that list together, you know, what? What needs to go where, things of that nature. So I don't know, Jason, is that something you could, uh, maybe start to compile a list like that? Maybe get it. Start sharing that information, you know, with the county IT group. And, and like you said, uh, you know, we don't necessarily have to put that in the bid then, if that's. You know, if that's how we want to go about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, we, we do that quite often. We can either do the full design or just do. Um, coordination and roughing and power requirements, uh, based on discussions that we'll have with your IT folks. So that we're making sure that, you know, all the pathways and the power requirements are there. To accommodate, uh, whatever they're going to provide. A lot of that stuff is CAT six anymore. It's not large. Uh, HDMI cables and those types of things. So that makes it a little easier, but, um, yeah, we can certainly, um, get with your IT folks and start laying that out and, uh. Making sure that we're accommodating all your needs.
John and, and Jason, when you talk about these monitors, you're talking about one ceiling hung one from there by that curtain. Instead of having that one behind it where, uh, uh, Courtney would be sitting, couldn't you hang both them from up there back to back? Wouldn't that provide the same thing?
Yeah, absolutely. That could be done.
That way, that would be more straightforward. Does that make sense? Anybody?
Uh, what, what I should tell you too, is in full disclosure, there's a column right here as well. So if maybe we could use that as well to mount.
As a swing arm or permanent mount hood or just use it for other things and yeah.
Well, and if we did have the, if we did have the partition in there, we'd want to be careful because I'm a few inches off that partition right now at the wall, but. You know, uh, we could put one on there for, you know, um. What, I tell you what, why don't we do a layout, Jason, if that works for you?
Yeah, what's, what's the ceiling height? What's the ceiling height in there, John?
Yeah. So that's nine feet right now.
Okay. Well, yeah, that, that may be problematic. It just is if we get, uh, very large monitors, um, we're going to run into ADA walking past that. So. Um, we'll just have to look at some of those options.
Well, and potentially we go, we can go a little higher potentially. We're 12 foot floor to floor in there. And I know we have some. Gosh, we have some 24 inch, uh, beams, I think. So we would be down. The, I think the highest potentially would be that 10 foot mark potentially, if that helps out any. Love to talk about that.
Yep, we can, we can, we can look at that. And then, uh, in the meantime, we'll get in touch with IT and, uh, start running through some of the possibilities for the AV design.
Yeah. Why don't we, uh, why don't we get this kicked off AV, uh, Jason, we'll just start passing information back and forth with, uh. With IT as well as, um, we'll keep everybody on the phone informed in terms of what we're doing as well.
That would be very helpful.
Okay. Uh, one more thing to add on this plan is I did put, uh, wood.
Nah.
Some wood panels on these three sides of the room. And. Oh, those are, it's a, it's a system by, I think Armstrong, but, um. There are wood veneered panels with, uh, some sound deadening qualities to them. And I did send those over to you, I think. Let me, let me get to those real quick.
While he's pulling that up, is Dalton the, the main?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Are you still able to see, um, wood panels popping up here?
Yeah.
Okay. So let me know your preference. I think the wood in there is a light. I don't know if it's maple on the doors. I'd have to take a, a harder look at it, but. So these panels, um, I think are by Armstrong, like I said. Uh, and they'd be on, on three walls, but they do help absorb sound. And I think it helped dress up the space a little bit. Uh, it's in the, right now it's included in the estimate. Um, but the question, big picture question, wanted you to put your eyes on it, see if it's something you're interested in keeping. In the project or if you have any other comments about, uh, that idea.
Yeah, it, it does have that courtroom look to it, don't it?
That's some of the design intent too, is to sort of blend with your existing buildings. So the courtroom does have that light wood. Um, and yeah, you, you're right. Um, but again, this is, um. Even this picture here is a, is a presentation sort of setup, uh, you know, with your, your lecture. The screen and whatnot. So I think the intent of this product is to absorb, absorb some of that sound. It just makes speech a little bit more clear.
So, those are wooden laminate. Is that, are they actually wood laminate or are they, uh?
Yeah. So real wood, yeah, real wood veneer, your selection of whatever, right? I, I landed on maple. And then you could have these perforations in it as well with, uh, sound absorbing backup. So. You know, we could pick out those, those, uh. Perforations as well, but, uh. Yeah, really overall, yeah, that is the, uh, the intent.
I wouldn't do it with my tools, but.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Do you, do you have those same types of panels and colors? As opposed to wood?
Yeah, to answer the question, yeah. If you didn't like the wood, uh, look, there are other options where. Uh, you could do a fabric, um, cover, covering fabric, um, but. I, I, I understand the question and if you'd like me to look into something else besides wood.
Just throwing it out there. That's all I'm doing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is this quite a bit more expensive this by going this type of a system or?
Well, I could look into the cost, um, but what I did do, uh, again, is I, I am only putting it on this wall. Part of this wall where there's not a window and part of this wall where there's not a window. So. I'm using it very sparingly. Um, I'd say the cost, you know, I don't, I could look into that exactly what it is. Uh, it would be more than just, you know, if we just went with regular drywall, um. You know, that's the other option is, uh, drywall, you know, um. That sort of thing. But yeah, I thought this would dress up your room. And I think you'll have this similar wood look on these two, uh, pieces as well.
I guess, I guess my thoughts are, you know, the courtroom is. It's pretty much a, uh. Typical of that era of. You know, the sixties, they were probably all built that way.
Yep.
Do we want to keep doing that? You know, I mean, or some. Something that's maybe a little.
That was.
I guess.
That day. And again, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you're bringing it up and I, I'm totally open for discussion on it. So.
Well, I don't know.
Are you planning on this drop ceiling in this room?
So yeah, and as for a standard two by two, uh, grid ceiling and. As Jason and I just talked about, right now it's set at nine feet. We're gonna see if maybe we can push that a little bit higher for doing ceiling mounted, uh, um, monitors.
I don't know. I just look at, at homes today, you know, back. Yeah.
I agree with, I mean, that.
I mean, you know, there was a time when, when, when oak was, when oak and golden oak was in, but it's not today, you know, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Well, um.
For dark person.
Did you have, have a preference in maybe? Oops.
Yeah.
So you picked this to match the doors that are there currently?
Just that lighter. Yeah, that lighter, um, wood, uh, sort of, I think. I had to guess, I'd say right now it's maple. Let me get back to where I was. There we go. Yeah. So. Uh, your golden oaks are maybe, you know, represented here in some, like you said, bygone eras. Uh, the right now what I'd selected was this maple, and I think that sort of matches the courtroom. But again, uh, if, if you have a preference to go with maybe a, a color. Um, or, you know, like I said, the drywall, um, there's wall coverings. Uh, sky's the limit. If you give me a direction in terms of what you, what your preference would be. I could take note of that. And then, uh, Amy, who's, who's doing the interior, uh, design right now could, could, uh, follow up, you know, follow back on that.
Okay, well, that's going in now.
I mean, the color on the county logo, that blue color.
I don't care. I don't care if it's fat.
Stay with.
What, Courtney?
Fabric, just because of the dust that's in it.
Well, I mean, just about like a wall like that. That's drywall. Yeah, the acoustics down there could get a little crazy. What kind of flooring was that again, John? Was that some type of tile?
Um, so the flooring in, it's, it's imagined for your space, uh, you know, in the future would be carpet, I presume. And that'll help.
That'll help a lot.
That helps a lot. And the ceilings help quite a bit as well. So. Um, yeah, I definitely, I don't think.
Ice it with doing your.
Drywall and fabric and, and I, I guess I'm just the meeting room down there right now. You know, it's, it's how, has hard surfaces. It's got a hard floor and it's got. You know, but I don't think we have a problem down there with that. Oh, we're going to go a little bit bigger. It's gonna be a little bit bigger. Dissipate, but that also brings in maybe possible more.
The only.
Crowd noise or.
Completely got was not having individual microphones without being fixed.
We've had that problem up here before.
Yeah. Yeah. But I don't mind the acoustic panels that he has. Uh, placed on the walls, uh, maybe just the walls and. And the carpet and an acoustic type tile and the ceiling and we should be decent shape, I think.
You know, the picture shows it on the ceiling and if we're not putting on a ceiling, might change things too.
Oh, I've changed it a lot, I think. Well, I would think drywall's got to be considerably cheaper than all the options, correct?
Yeah, for sure. Right.
The perforation is great, John, but I can just see that, that our, uh. Custodian might chase us pretty hard when we come in sometime. It can be kind of a dirt collector.
Sure. Well, yeah, um, why don't we, uh, presume we want to move away from the wood panels? I think that's a safe, safe presumption. And then, um. Sounds like maybe the, uh, fabric is maybe not. And, and again, I don't know that you really need anything. Like you said, carpet and a dropped ceiling is going to go a long way.
Again, we don't want to build a Taj Mahal.
Okay. Mess, message received. And then again, too, I heard, uh, a paint option. So if we want to do an accent, you know, paint color as well. Uh, and maybe, you know, county logo or something as well. That, that, you know, that's certainly well within reason.
You can change that easy as the years go by.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Okay, um, I think in fairness of time too, I, uh. I think we all agree. That that's the route we'll go, um. On the wall panels. Uh. We're gonna go probably paint. And the wood.
The pictures and stuff. I don't hear that from him a lot.
But you know, we could do that by putting some pictures in the county throughout the whole.
I haven't seen the ones the sheriff did, but I heard that's pretty cool.
One thing I did want to point out to you as well is. Something that would definitely be built and, and installed is this, this head table and the side counter as well. These other pieces here would be furniture that would be, you know, purchased, um, just by, uh, uh, options, not necessarily. Fabricated specifically for this particular project. So my question for you. Do you want to have these two pieces included in the contract cost? And so the contractor.
Yeah, just so they match. I'd say just as well.
For the countertops for the five supervisors, are those slanted down at a slight angle?
Uh, they certainly could be, if that's a preference.
I mean, so they come down toward you a little bit and it's still flat? Do they come?
Oh, they come work to.
Oh, they come work to you?
Yeah, like a pencil would roll downhill, it's gonna be a flat, and that way. Instead of a flat one, I mean, I think if they angle back.
How much, you're not talking very much.
No, 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 just a few degrees, five degrees.
Since you don't want sort of the iPad.
No, no. It's like just sitting here, it would be just a little bit.
Hey, John? Yeah, hey, just one thing, just to kind of point out, like, like with those, like with the, all the there is plenty of furniture in that public or something, just we're gonna need, and because of the structure being that pan type of structure, we're gonna need to coordinate poke throughs and those kind of things due to go feed those.
All right.
Yeah, so I, I know we've, we've had that issue, we're on a, on a project here recently where we've had to kind of shift, uh, like floor boxes and stuff, just to, so they're coming through in the center of a pan and not through a beam.
Oh.
So, so, so just, just as an FYI, I know this is laid out in a certain way, but we're kind of limited based on what the structure is gonna allow us to do, so you might wanna, I don't know if you have a good, a good existing conditions for that structure, but just FYI.
Yeah, so there'll be a beam running along this column line, and then there's other beams, just, and I think they're really the, the joists, so to speak, that are running.
Oh, so, so it's not a, this isn't like one of those, uh, those pan type.
Like a waffle?
Yeah, like a waffle.
No.
Underneath there, okay.
No, so we have the concrete joists every five feet here, Tom, so I think we'll have an opportunity on either side of, I think they're twelve inch wide floor joists. So we should be pretty, you know, pretty easy to access poke throughs, you know.
And again, that's just a coordination thing, I just wanted to make sure, just, just kind of popped into my head as I was looking at this, we had another.
Yeah, so. Yeah, for everyone, well, we'll plan on doing floor boxes underneath these, these spots as well, they get all your wiring uh, up and through the floor, um, and probably back to the IT closet. I could, I would imagine, which is, that's in basement, or if we need to add another one. Um, you know, we could talk about that. Storage room for, for, you know, that server or whatnot, but yeah, uh, if this is, you know, we agree this is the layout, we're gonna put little floor boxes in for power and data into each of those locations.
John, let's go back to the inside radius of the, the arch. There, there will be a lip there, I assume, and you, how high is that little piece going to be? Is it big enough for an electrical box, or is it bigger than that?
That's a good question, let me get to that, we can, we could look at what's sketched in right now, and, uh, sort of take it from there, so, uh, this is, this is what you see, so this is going back to matching what's in the courtroom as well with just the wood cap, I think I see a, a box floating up here, which uh, is what you're asking about right now, um, and then a little rolled edge in real wood, now, I think, uh, the question was, do we want to slant this, this top, and, and I think what you're asking too is do we want to raise this up maybe a little bit, and then put an edge out on the front too as well, so yeah, I'm, uh, I'm open to.
I think I would prefer the edge out a little bit, and then that box, little tiny box there is enclosed inside of a bigger piece. Um, just so, and I assume that they, that'll be for electric and or AV cords or uh, microphone wires that better get through a channel in there some way, um.
So, yeah, so what you're looking for is a box on this.
I don't want to feel like that we have to peer over the top at something, but, but I, but I certainly would like to have it up maybe six, eight inches tall, where you can write things down and they can't.
Right, you're right, yeah, for sure, now, some of that, uh, you know, if we start to slant this, then that starts to raise, you know, you kind of see where that goes, it starts to chase itself a little bit, so. First question, uh, do we want to slant the, the countertop, or maybe a portion of it?
Yeah, Scott says yes, and I think he's probably worked on one, and I'm sure he probably knows the reasons why, so. But I, he was thinking maybe five degrees or less.
Yeah, sure, yeah. And I'll sketch that up, and I'll, I'll get the information over to you. And then, uh, this, you want to see maybe go up a little higher?
I don't know how high you've got it now. Yeah, the electric box, the AV box, and everything is.
What is that box right there?
Is inside of it.
I think that's the box we're talking about, so, so it's kind of floating right now, um, but I think what I typically see is that sideways. And typically what I do is from this point down to this point, I'd have about four inches or so.
Okay, so then there. A half, I'm, it's a nine inch piece.
Yeah, so that would be.
Over the top of that water bottle. Pretty close. I mean, it, it, you don't want to feel like you're looking over at anybody, you know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know if you want to look too much over.
It also means a little privacy.
Well, you could also put the boxes in the.
Finger is, that water bottle is closer to eight. Seven and a half.
And see, I think even less than that, I think.
Well, yeah, but, but it's still three, it's still from side to side, um.
Somebody in the electrical department may help me, are they three inches in the three inch box, this is a three inch box?
No, it's a four by, four by two box for a single.
Is it two for a single gang?
If you went up four inches, I think that would be.
Would be more than enough, it's only your laptop sliding back at you. Okay, so John, I guess we're gonna kind of defer to you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
At height, um.
You were talking about slowing down from four.
I've seen some of those get in there, too tight, and you get like these big chargers, which most everything anymore is becoming smaller, but you'll never know where we're headed.
Why don't we do, you know, to that note, why don't we, uh, you can get these outlets that like have half, like, you have one, one receptacle, it's a hundred and twenty volts, and above that, or to the side of it, if you use side mounted or two USB ports, so you can do charging without a transformer.
I would get the state of the arts, pipe plugs and put in there right now.
Okay, we'll do that, we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that you'll have, you'll have one duplex and then one, uh, one duplex with half of it being a USB charger for each board of supervisor station. And that way you'll have plenty of room to plug stuff into.
Yep, sounds good. I just, that, that height of that thing, I just didn't want to feel like we're, I want to be isolated a little bit, so if I write something or lay something down, I don't want everybody seeing, but, uh, but I don't want them to feel like they were belittling them by making them try to look up and over.
Yeah, I think, I think what we'll try to stick with is about thirty inches on this front, and then about maybe thirty-six or so on this, this side, thirty-six is your kitchen countertop. So, you know, somewhere in that range. Okay, okay, and, uh, we're gonna get more into finishes too, uh, Amy's gonna put together some materials and whatnot, so I think we'll have another conversation in the future about what all these finishes, uh, will likely end up, uh, being, so, um, I think this is all really awesome, you know, this is a good, really great information right now, to get all this designed, and then next step will be getting the finishes dialed in, uh, on everything. Um, I'm gonna jump back to the plan again. Any, any other comments, uh, in terms of, uh, I think I'm gonna try to stretch this out a little bit, um, with that said, I think we could, if we wanted to, we could tie this two-person table in with this head table, so it connects rather than having two separate pieces.
You're connected right now.
My, my opinion is I don't think that should be a two-person desk anyway, it should be a two-person desk, but only have one seated. She, she has bigger spread than things that she puts out, that most of us don't see.
Yeah, if you want, let's look at Jared next to her, I guess you could.
You could.
Yeah, absolutely, and so, uh, do you, having this angled, or do you, do you want one large for six people, or having the, do you like this, maybe connecting these two together?
I think separate's better.
Okay, perfect, okay, I think adding a little length to this too, I'll, with line of sight, you know, as well, from one person to the next. So, that's good, we'll, we'll move in that direction.
My question to you, the, the plan is to get this, the bo, bo, uh, board table and the auditor's table, and that, and, uh, equipment set up in that room, and then worry about the rest later on as we move, okay, because that's like in order to work in this room, we gotta be moved down there, so.
Right, well, let me understand your question, so right now, yeah, we're gonna get, uh, we're gonna get, uh, the side table, we'll, we'll come up with the lectern and, uh, another table to all be provided in the contract. And then we're also getting you a list of equipment for IT to, to start to look at and price.
That sounds great.
Okay, okay.
John, do you create solid models for any of that stuff, or not?
Yeah, you know what they are, they, they are, uh, BIM models right now, so. You want me to do, it starts to get to be a slippery slope, but I could start to produce some rough three-dimensional models for you to look at as well. Um, and when I say slippery slope, it's when we want to start to get real photo reel, where I start adding a lot of time to it, so.
Oh, oh, but as far as a better, a solid model in, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I could get some images from inside that, in, in fact, I already have that set up, um, I wanted to wait till we were pretty close in terms of what we wanted. For sure, before I start sharing some of those 3D images with you, but I, I could certainly do that, but yeah, that's, uh, that's something I could certainly do, so, why don't I, uh, I, you know, I, I do want to understand too, as we move forward, if we want to set up maybe some a, a meeting to have kind of midstream, before we get far to the end, if we want to schedule a, a meeting coming up here, or maybe early in June or so, just so we can keep, keep caught up, and we don't just have the meeting at the very end, maybe that's something I wouldn't mind scheduling.
It's a good idea.
First week of June.
You're, you're gonna be, you're gonna be bubbing up to your.
See how the supervisor, see how there's angle down, just. Lectern angles down.
That sounds fine.
John, that's not gonna work.
Whatever, yeah, whatever works, yeah.
What about either the Monday before, which would probably be May, or the Monday after?
That's what I want, something.
May thirty-first?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
Yeah, we'll have a chance to start drawing some of this up, and then meet again and talk about it, and that would probably be a good opportunity to start getting, uh, finishes in front of you as well, so I, yeah, that, that works really good. Um, I'm, I'm gonna presume we could wrap that up, we'll catch up to these comments with you. And I think you answered it, my questions here.
Yeah.
See how it angles down toward the council people? Microphone comes up here, and then this.
John, I see on your agenda, we can jump into that, the status of hazardous materials, have you heard anything from the company?
No, they're gonna be here this week, I think.
Never mind, they're coming here this week.
That's perfect, so right now, we have some costs included in the cost estimate for asbestos abatement, so we have that covered right now. In areas where we presume it might be, but if we get good news and there isn't any asbestos, then we start to lower that, that overall cost.
I'll bet on it.
Should we bet?
I can, I'll take a magic marker down there and mark them most of them for you.
Well, that's fair, that's fair, like I said, down the road in Exyra, we saw the ceilings had asbestos in the school, everybody's, yeah, there's a, we did an addition to that school back when, but, uh, everybody would have swore there was the same ceiling you have in the courthouse, uh, nineteen sixty school down in Exyra, no asbestos.
That was a gift from above.
Like, yeah, so, y- you never know, um, now, back to the, uh, the question regarding, uh, the additional temporary space, is that something you would like me to really fit out that old? Um, I can get to the plan here. Can show you the way we have it laid out right now. But I would just need confirmation, we talked about it last time. I sketched it in, but just kind of final, final blessing on fitting this out, carpet, paint, ceilings, all that for a temporary space in addition to this space, and, and, uh, I think we talked about just needing.
That would be that, uh, the newer part of the jail cells.
Right, right.
We don't.
We were gonna do that so that other offices, when they're told to move, had a place to go.
Yeah, maybe, you know, if we're doing three or four spaces at once, you know, you can't fit everybody into this one temp space, so we talked about fitting out a little bit more space for that.
It's jail cell.
It's jail cell, it's the newer part of the jail cell.
Just employees, they can deal with the bars. It's just a room.
We could take out that short wall out of there, maybe. Really want to do that? Don't know what we're gonna wind up with.
Well, the problem is, we don't, you're gonna be asking all these people that, to get out of their offices, and they have nowhere to go.
Yep.
So where are you gonna put them?
I thought we were gonna use little chairs.
We're gonna need, we're gonna need more one person moving, probably, right, is what we're getting up to that.
Yeah, so we, we really tried to tighten our belts and get this down to three phases, but what, when we do that, that means a lot more, you know, people moving at one time each phase, so, um, yeah, I think last time we spoke about maybe getting a couple departments to fit in here, and maybe potentially a couple others, you know, at a time. Uh, so, some, you know, maybe moving over to the jail, you know, sharing up on the second floor, but once we get down to maybe first floor and or, you know, ground floor and basement all happening at once. Uh, I think I had it listed in terms of how that phasing worked, um.
Yeah, and you did.
And, and what that looks like.
Use part of the, uh, that east end, what's gonna be this supervisory room, we're gonna use that as a staging area for right now too, right?
For, for the board, yeah, but then after that, then, uh, the board had, moves out of that, and into the new space, so I think the way we have it, um, phase one, supervisors, yeah, you do move up to the first floor. Second floor, the courts can share, uh, and then the jury room could potentially go over to the jail, um, conference room, but after that, once we start moving into, you know, phase two, we have clerk of court, juvenile court services, should have put a comma there, but the auditor and the assessor all need to go somewhere at once, and we talked last time about this maybe not working so well with only one, only one room.
So where they'll end up being saved.
Hey, John, ju- just, uh, just a quick thought, that in those temp, temp swing spaces that we're showing, one thing we'll, we'll need to kind of think through, who and, like, how many people are gonna sit there, where the seats are at, and those kind of things.
Yeah.
Because we'll want to show temporary power and those kind of things in those spaces as part of all days, and we don't want to kind of leave that open-ended until we get to the move, and then all of a sudden you have a change order to add a bunch of power and network.
Right, right, and you're right, too, we did talk, we did talk about hardwiring those. Even though it's temporary, we're gonna do conduit and, and, and boxes and all that to get power and data, instead of trying to go wireless, so.
So basically, you're talking about taking out that wall in there, that separates the hallway and the jail.
Right.
And then just, uh, probably painting the walls and putting carpet down for the time being.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, and then the nice things that much closer to being available to be used as an office in the future.
Yeah, it's not like we're gonna waste it, waste it.
Right, right.
I think we're going to need those temporary spaces.
I think so.
Otherwise we're renting that, rent some spots and I don't want to do that.
Yeah, this is the time to probably go ahead and do it. So 470 square feet, you could probably get comfortably, um, you know, six, six people in there. Same thing over here. Usually you go a hundred square feet per person, but that's pretty liberal. So, you know, maybe six in each space, you could fit 12, 12 people in each. And like Tom mentioned too, we'd start laying out where maybe desks go, just so we know where to put power and things of that nature in the wall.
We're talking for about three months.
Each, yeah.
We're going to have a TV way around it. I mean, they, they, they still have to work.
I don't want to make it miserable.
Now I do not put officers, I wonder she could work home for three months. Now it might have to allow her meeting space at some point.
Question.
And that could have done. And that could be done to use one of those rooms over to jail.
I think we don't want to get rid of all those desks that Pingery has in its office right now saves Zach from moving stuff back and forth. If they move into a temporary desk with a temporary computer, it's there for the whole time, no matter who's sitting there.
Right. Yeah, the rest of the desk could get covered with probably while they're working in different spaces.
Anything that stays up here can be covered in plastic.
But I think we want to keep those desks.
Everybody agree we should probably do that temporary space?
Yes, I agree. I think we should.
Okay, there you got your, John, go ahead.
Perfect. I think I already presumed that. So, yeah, we're going to.
Hey, John, I'm going to have, I'm going to, I told Ryan just to, we're, we're just going to put like a quad receptacle and a network drop at each, at each temp location. Will the surface mount and be keep it cheap? And I'll, I'll just have those guys coordinate, maybe a layout with you that we can kind of set up so we can kind of know where to space the receptacles and stuff at.
Yeah, I think.
Especially in the old jail area, because there won't be anything there.
Yeah, I think, yeah. And so I'll start to do a quick desk layout and like Tom said, we'll get power and data drops to each of those spaces, hardwired in. Sorry, Tom? Um, and we'll, we'll start working in that direction right now. Uh, in terms of the existing jail sheriff's building, uh, I had talked to the sheriff, uh, in the past about getting, uh, drawings electronically for that. Is, is he the best person to talk to? We still, we haven't gotten drawings, um, electronically or otherwise for the jail, just FYI, we're still able to work, but if we could get a copy of those, we could start to connect the buildings together, so to speak, a little better than what we have it shown right now. Uh, so, uh, is it Ken? I can't remember last name. Is he the best person to, to likely go to to ask for those?
Probably Tony Bating.
Would you want the general contractor maybe or the architect to get the originals from them?
Um, yeah.
Where are you thinking of getting them from?
I think Tony would be the best.
So the general contractor would work?
Are you wanting the as-built, as, as-built drawings is what you're looking for?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, that's exactly.
Know that we have gotten them yet.
Yeah, by now, uh, my opinion, you should have received them. Is that, is that building substantially complete?
Oh, we just did the final change order today with the, we love.
Okay.
My, my opinion is give us what you got. And because anything is better than nothing at this point. So just whatever plans that you have, that's we'll take. So, so I think that's, that's kind of the, kind of the big deal.
So should we assume that we should have gotten those already from Shai Vattery?
I would say if you were a hundred percent complete and had substantial occupancy, then yes, but it sounds like maybe you're not quite there just yet. So then the answer would be no. So, uh, but yeah, like Tom's saying, anything we could get, even, you know, well, we're glad to talk to the contractor. We, early on we went to the architect and they were a little reluctant to give us that information, which sometimes happens, but, uh, in this case it was pretty adamant, oh, I think that we received. So we're, what we're trying to do is either, you know, get a copy of anything electronically that you might have from the contractor's side or from the sheriff's side.
We, we will work on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. It, it's going to make for a, a much better project, I think, at the end of the day.
Now either we'll have the contractor get you a copy or, and we should add those as-built, I think.
They're probably not going to give them to us till they.
Not until this final change, not until this final change order gets paid. I'm going with.
I'm not just saying, that's probably why they.
Well, there should be, uh, some, a lot of times there's a, there's a record set that's kept current. So if the contractor has that, uh, I think on this project that we're working on right now, we're going to have it set up so that we have that information at the, you know, touch of a button, so to speak, as we, as we move through. So, uh, again, I could see the reluctance of the architect not wanting to get it, but if we could touch base with the contractor, I think maybe we could get, put in the right direction on it.
Is there a reason you need, need to tie those two buildings together or?
Uh, I mean, the power is trying, yeah, the power is tied together. The.
All right, that's my question.
Yeah. Fire alarm. And there's a lot of things we need to make sure we coordinate.
After.
That's a Tuesday.
Are you talking about the insurance meeting?
No, 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 no.
We'll get, we'll get back to you on that, John.
Okay. All right. Uh, so the next item is the, uh, just to review HVAC. Better at Tom, I don't know if you want to go through drawings or if you just have a, you just want to kind of chat about maybe, I, I think we're following in terms of tracking steps.
Yeah, I'm, I, I honestly, unless, and, uh, I, I don't know if the board wants us to go through page by page in the mechanical and electrical. I mean, we don't really have anything. I mean, the stuff that the biggest question mark we had was frankly, the board of supervisors room, at least on the mechanical or electrical and technology side. Uh, Joe, I don't know if you had any specific questions mechanically you had or or, uh, for that matter, Jason or Ryan.
Mechanically, I don't really have anything major at the moment. I guess my question was just if they had any questions for me on, on any of that BRF system or the layout. So.
Should be the same as well. It's gotten jailed because I don't, I don't see any questions there.
Fair enough. Yeah. And they put a little line in there just to make sure we're, we're tracking. Um, all that information right now is being shown in the DD set, uh, in terms of lighting, uh, HVAC, uh, equipment, things of that nature. It's all in the docs, but I would say if there's any questions or any, you know, anything we need to discuss, we can do that now. We could wait till the 31st as well. But I think like, like we said, everything is tracking in terms of what we've discussed already in the past.
The, the, the big thing to look at is like, we, we sent along, I know John issued some cut sheets. Like for example, for all the lighting and plumbing equipment and some of that stuff. And, and it would be good for you to take a look through that. Um, all the lights are identified like by F1, F2, F3 uh, on the plans. And then you can, by opening that cut sheet like John's doing, then you can kind of see what, okay, this is what an F1 looks like. And, and then so on and so forth. And if you have any major questions or opinions, let us know. So the, 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 you know, the, the controls too are going to be, um, probably the one area we'll want to maybe, when we get together on the 31st, once we get the layouts kind of nailed for the board of supervisors room is to maybe talk through a little bit the, uh, um, the controls for that room, especially in light of having a partition in there and how, how that, how you want to have it switched and all the lights will be dimmed and, and what that looks like and what we're going to need to, to do there. But that, that's, that's a fairly brief conversation you can have, you know, on the 31st.
Yeah. So with the, with the drawings we sent you, you'll, you'll have all these cut sheets as well. So these are manufacturers, product cut sheets. If you want to kind of look around through there, uh, some of it's somewhat dry, but it's all lighting, things of that nature, uh, is really relevant. If you want to look through some of that.
Really exciting to my team, but it may not be to you.
I said, I said some of it, some of it's dry, like, uh, I don't know, but not all of it. Uh, so pointing out, uh, that, you know, it's, it's really the equipment that will be going in on project at the end of the day. So, uh, regardless, uh, it, it, you know, have, have a peek through it. Uh, and then if you have questions, obviously let us know. But you should have architecture, lighting, mechanical for sure, as well as your drawings.
There's a lot of stuff out there. I've kind of went through it already. I'm going to Jim.
Okay.
Took forever to download. Just pretty crazy.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty. Um, pretty high, yeah, in the storage on that. But, um, last thing I guess, uh, is where we're at. Uh, cost wise on the project. So as I've, as I, as we've always mentioned in the past, we want to put everything into this estimate that we can, that we can think of. So we, we're not, uh, under, you know, undercutting ourselves at the end of the day. But right now, as I mentioned before, we do have your base bid, uh, at three point, you know, three point seven, three point eight. Um, that's this number right here. That's your subtotal of, of, of the basics, um, so to speak. Now, these are your ad alternates. So on top of this number, if you were to accept any of these ads that we have currently included in the project, the first ad alternate is roofing. That's a 244 to re-roof the entire building. Uh, the second ad is the movable partition, which is about 30,000, um, maybe a little less because I think you included some millwork in that, which I have to go back and kind of touch base on. But the movable partition is another ad. Uh, again, base bid, you don't necessarily have to do it today or, you know, when the bid comes in, if you wanted to put it in down the road. The design is there, you could do it down the road if you wanted to. Uh, demo the jail, same thing. Uh, and the OWI space down in the southeast core, just demo for all that is in the $85,000 category. Um, so this is to get you where, you know, we think you're going to be. Uh, we had talked about the number being even higher for, I think, 4.4 maybe. Uh, just kind of taking a pot shot at it. This is dialing us in even better though. We're at about 3.7. And then we talked about that, the market, we just don't know. And Tom showed you the, the graphs and you know, the ups and downs and things of that nature. If you were to throw 10 more percent in, uh, you know, you'd be at 4.1. If it came in 20% higher than we thought it was going to be, you'd be about that 4.5 million on the base bid. Not including the alternates. So, uh, you know, if, if we had 4.4 million at the end of the day and your base bid came in at 4.1, 4.2, then you could maybe see it in the cards to take a couple alternates as well and add those in. So that's how this whole thing sort of reads, uh, right now. But I think big picture, we're tracking, uh, these numbers do include things, um, such as a design contingency, which I think was 5%. So that's any unforeseen conditions, escalation over the next few months, um, all the contractors' costs, all their overhead and profit. And also does include asbestos abatement. So we're presuming there's some asbestos in the building. Uh, we won't know until we get the report, but we're, we're still tracking that. So, Tom, do you have anything else to add to that cost estimate where we're at?
No, it's just kind of a scary time to be estimating as a design professional. It's just, you know, we, we've been pretty good. So, so, I mean, lately, I mean, we've been able to kind of anticipate stuff, but boy, I tell you, it just seems like every, every week we got something different thrown at us. So.
Yeah. So I did ask the estimator, uh, Dennis, who's working on this project with building cost consultants. Uh, kind of got a debrief from him. He said he has seen that central Iowa kind of getting a little higher, um, than what he was anticipating uh, in his estimates. So I could perceive this 10 to 20% on top of what he's already put in terms of contingencies and whatnot, maybe being a reality. Maybe we start thinking also the project being, you know, here. Um, and that would just be the market, where the market is right now in terms of labor and, and, uh, things of that nature.
We'll know we had end on a good note, John.
We're, we're still under budget right now.
We won't know that until bid day.
Exactly. But we're trying to position you as well as we, as well as we possibly can, uh, and be realistic about it.
Well, I tell you, we, we have a lot higher confidence now, I think, than we did at SD, just simply because we got something to take off on the plans. So we're able to actually quantify stuff. So it, it's, I mean, it's tracking. We just got to kind of, you know, it's just that little cap caveat in there that we got to kind of be, be all a little bit wary of. Hey, John, I, I did have one quick question that came up from one of my team members, uh, down in the board of supervisors room, that wall between, uh, where the partition's supposed to go. Is, is that, that's showing up as a solid wall in the model right now. Is that going to be open if there is no modular partition?
Yeah, that's a design, kind of a design phase thing in Revit. There'll be a temporary wall, hard wall put in. But after everything's said and done, it'll be removed. Those walls will be removed and opened up for a larger room. So.
Okay, that answers.
Putting that partition in. So yeah, any, any power and whatnot would be temporary in these walls. For sure.
Avoid, we'll just not put any power in them or anything. So we don't waste.
Yeah, we'll have to look at the, how the desk could potentially lay out. I could see.
Oh, oh, yeah. And the temp space. Yes, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I was thinking.
You know, just take note that it'll be removed, whatever's put in there temporarily. And that temporary is a year. So, you know, it's.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, right. Or, yeah, I had to think about that in terms of how we have it phased. Um, but I think this space will stay there regardless for the year. Supervisors will work out of this space and then end the project. This will be opened back up into, you know, so it'll, it'll be there for quite a little while. Yeah, this room will be about the same size as what you have right now. So you have around. Yeah. So we're just kind of pushing it south about the same size though. So with that said, I'm going to get the notes, uh, from today's meeting. I'll get those typed up and out to everybody. And then I think what we're going to try to do uh, is meet again on the 30th of May.
31st.
31st. You got me. Yeah, 31st.
Because Monday's a holiday.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, that'll, that'll work out. Um, anything else anybody would like to discuss, talk about? No? Okay. Well, again, thanks everyone. We're going to do a little bit more, um, you know, drafting and whatnot to catch back up to what we talked about today. And I think that meeting on the 31st will be great and start thinking about in terms of when, you know, maybe, you know, you perceive to want to get this out to bid, like Tom mentioned, later in the years, looks like the better. And.
We'll, we'll be able to talk about that on, on the 31st too. We'll, we'll spend some time in the next month making some calls, talking to some contractors, getting kind of a, a pulse on the market. And then, so we'll be able to bring that info back to and kind of chat with you.
You guys find it to be beneficial or realistic that you could come in person in that meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
For sure.
I know we've been doing it to avoid some travel expense, but at some point we're going to have to get together and look at things visually.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that'll work fine for me, Tom. I don't know, but.
Yeah, it works great. I mean, we're always open to that. So it's not, it's the hop and a skip from our place.
Okay.
Perfect. Well, again, thanks for your time. We appreciate it. Uh, and, uh, I look forward to talking to you again, uh, if not before May 31st and on May 31st, we'll, we'll see you.
Sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Courtney, did we, do we have anything for next week?
Courtney, did we, do we have anything for next week? Alrighty.
I will second it.
Motion in a second and more discussion, not all those papers signify this then, aye?
What do you, what do you eye in about? All right.
Yeah, sorry, you guys done?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.